All right, are we ready to get started? All right, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Thank you for joining us for the Town Council and OSAC joint meeting. Why don't we go around the table? I know we're all cramped in here, so it feels like family, right? And let's just do introductions, so everybody knows who everybody is. I'm Mark Lasis, I'm the mayor.
Hi, I'm Todd Miller, Councilmember.
I'm Todd Foster, Councilmember.
Hey, I'm Jason Cervu, Mayor of Proton.
Heather Freycraft, Councilmember.
And if I may, before OSAC begins, what I'd really love to do is have folks introduce yourselves, tell how long you've been volunteering, and then also if there's any kind of specialty that you are doing for the team.
Okay, well, I'm Todd Gleason, I'm the junior member on the [laughter] I haven't passed a year yet. And I'm particularly interested in watching the development of coyote ranch.
I'm Jeff Wade, an OSAC member. If we're going by age, I'm probably the senior member.
I meant tenure, I wasn't referring to [laughter].
Couldn't be, I don't know if you got me in check. I guess my most recent interest has been this coming up list of trail lanes.
Kristy Verbeck, OSAC, and I'm the wildfire liaison.
Joanne Menary, OSAC, and Wildlife Encouragement Team.
Rita Trainor, I do the Weed Warrior program, I can't say I enjoy, but I like seeing the results, and I love open space, so I feel like it's a way of contributing to making it better.
And budget.
And budget.
And I've been on the team since 2020, and I try to play in a little bit of everything, although I would say that my favorite portion is exploring what we do for master planning for the legacy of the committee.
Tracy Bain, I'm also joined in 2020, and I run our Wildlife Monitoring Program, I'm on the Wildlife Encouragement Team, been doing a lot of the Rintiside stuff you may have seen recently.
And I'm Amber Greaves, I've been on, I think, since 2020 as well, different time of year, 2021 maybe, but I've been working more specifically around, you know, conservation efforts and wildlife, and specifically, my niche within that is prairie dogs, so those have kind of been my focus, as well as land acquisition and looking into grants.
Lester Clark, I'm the pros director, and I just wanted to let everybody know, Pari Ohm, who's our staff liaison, is not here, but she will be joining us soon, so you may not see her, but you might hear her.
Hey, everybody, I'm Jen Power, she's a council member.
Mike McCarroll, I joined OSAC in 2021, been involved in the Marshall Fire Remembrance, and also working with Todd on coyote ranch.
All right, well, thanks for the introductions, and I'll turn it over to you, Karen, are you leading the show?
Sure, so I'd like to start really just with our mission focus. I know you all have a lot of experience with our team, but to just set the stage, our mission is to acquire, conserve, and provide stewardship of natural open spacelands, associated resources to promote and protect wildlife, to ensure public enjoyment and appropriate recreation, and to conduct relevant educational programs. So we've built our work plan, everything designed so that we can provide you with the best recommendations that we can to make all of those things achievable. Now, I know this evening, you have a list of many items, but we fully recognize there's no way we're going to get through all of these. What we'd like to do is, you know, we have an amazing talented team of volunteers, specific area experts, especially when it comes to promoting raptors and our wildlife and the preservation of our habitat. So I'd like to start there, and then we're going to try to move into land acquisition, and then final budget, and everything else on this list, that would be great if we can get to it, I just know that it would be, it might be a stretch. So to begin with, let's talk about sitzai and the wildlife. This started several years ago, about four years ago, five years ago.
The Wildlife Monitoring Program started at that long ago, and the Raptor Monitoring Program actually precedes that, so.
Yeah, and so it's really grown into a group of members who are reporting on wildlife, where we're seeing them, what are the new things that we're seeing, and with that, and we'll come back to it, to talk about what we need to do to restore habitat, but why don't you begin with the demonstration of what we're collecting?
Yeah, so I thought I would just take a minute, nothing too long, but give you a little bit of an overview of how we are collecting all this data. So both the Raptor Monitoring and the Wildlife Monitoring Programs are entirely volunteer-led and contributions come entirely from volunteers. This is the Raptor Monitoring Program slightly different than the Wildlife Program, only in the sense that because we know where nests are, we have people that are often watching nests pretty consistently. With the Wildlife Monitoring Program, sorry, it's a little awkward from this angle, the volunteers are mostly reporting on things that they happen to see. So if someone is out and about, sees a coyote, they can submit a report through this program. So it's pretty simple, the way it works, you know, you just say, I want to add data. I can't see what we're adding, but that's okay. But we're adding a beaver, I wish we had one. There is a beaver in Lafayette now, which is pretty cool, so we're hoping that we'll get some further upstream here on Coal Creek, but not yet, or at least not that I'm aware of. I had a walk with a naturalist yesterday from CU, and to the best of our knowledge, there are not any beaver on our stretch of Coal Creek. Well, we know there aren't any on our stretch, but there could be some further upstream. But anyway, we use this to enter data, and I will show you. So for example, we can, Mark, this is one of the nice features about this, a little bit more sophisticated way that we're monitoring data these days, we can go and specify exactly where we're seeing an animal, and then it can generate a map for us of where all of the locations are. Right now, we happen to have a camera, let's see, I can't tell where exactly I am from this angle, but there we go, I think the camera is basically right there, and so we are watching day and night for animals, which is pretty cool. It'll lead into our next topic, which is about habitat preservation, with a little bit of information about what we've seen down here. This camera got installed a day before the Team Rubicon cleanup down there. It went very quiet. We didn't see much of anything for about a month. Since then, we have had coyote and baka. We do have a raccoon family that lives down there all the time. We have a little squirrel that we see on a consistent basis. So that's an interesting observation. We also, as you may or may not be aware, have a raptor nest, we have a great horned owl nest right down here, along the creek, and that also has, at least at the moment, we're pretty sure it's failed. We don't, can't obviously attribute that directly to the Team Rubicon work, but it's possible that that's what generated the problem, because the mother was off the nest for those couple of days that that work was going on. So she is still sitting on the nest, it's possible that she laid another hatch of eggs, but the more likely scenario is that the nest failed. And we actually have a very, very high success rate with great horned owls here, so it's a little unusual. But anyway, then you just can go through volunteers, and can go through and fill out the rest of this form, well, that didn't work, and submit it, and then you can see that when we get back to here, we can go and look at all of the observations. And I'm not sure how to scroll through here, I can't see the scroll bar, but anyway, as you can see, we get a report of where everything is coming from, all the things that say trail cam, or things that I've entered. We're watching it, like I said, we get pictures all the time. We've had a couple of interesting things, we've had musk rats back at Boz Pond, been a long time, we had mink that came in and took out the musk rats at Boz Pond, but now they're back, which is interesting, and we've had mink over at HHS. So it's been a quiet baka year, but a lot of coyotes. So we also had coyote and fox in the same areas around Boz Pond, and that's a little bit interesting, and a little bit unique. So anyway, just wanted you to have an idea that we are tracking this stuff, you know, in pretty detailed fashion, and I'm currently working with a group, Wild Boulder, that does animal tracking in Boulder County. So we're trying to figure out if there's a, you know, how we could make a connection, see if there's a way to use the data in a little bit more early, so.
Is this for anyone, or is this just for people that have access to it?
If they volunteer, they can have access to it, and they, so I'm not super, like, especially with the Wildlife Monitoring, not super concerned, people can volunteer, and I'm happy to have them join. Raptors a little more closely watched, just because the nest locations are kind of sensitive information. A lot of this, these animals are on the move, it's a little less sensitive information.
I was asking because the community is always posting, people in the community are always posting pictures, and there's some people that are enthusiasts, but I don't know that they're on this committee or would have access to it or know about this, so maybe not great for, like, everyone to access. No one knows if they know what they're seeing, or, you know, but I'm picking up some of those people that get the good pictures of them and are tracking them.
Right, and anybody that is interested, please send them my ways, send them Pari's way, we're happy to add people, always, and yes, then they can see it and they get, both, Peter's really good about providing a lot of updates on the Raptor Monitoring Program, I provide at least quarterly updates, I just did an update this weekend, so they get information about what the critters are doing, if they're interested in joining, so yeah, we're happy to have people, the more the merrier, really. So we'll just leave, but it does lead us into a little bit more detail about what happened, you know, in the recent cleanups, and I know, I know there was a lot of pressure, I understand the concerns and the reason that fire mitigation, flood mitigation, for doing both the cleanup around Original Town and down by Rock Creek, but from our perspective, it was a pretty significant loss of habitat. So I think it leaves us with a lot of things to think about for the future. It's a shame, of course, Coal Creek is a pretty pristine habitat, or has been, it's the only area that doesn't have a path along it, not the only, there's a little bit, a small section of Rock Creek as well, but for the most part, it's relatively unzeraed, it's zoned, open space, natural. But when we went in and had Team Rubicon do that cleanup, you know, it took out a lot of dead trees, it took out a lot of underbrush, there's a lot of disturbed soil, and that leaves, for one, it takes away a lot of habitat, it's a lot of nesting denning spots for people cover for critters, so obviously, from our perspective, we have some concerns about the habitat loss. Riparian habitats in general, house more than 40% of all animals in Colorado. So if you look at it that perspective, you know, we obviously want to protect that. So we would like to, I'd like to bring out a couple things. One is urgency, we need to think about restoration, and that's sort of what we'll wrap up with here, is your support for some restoration efforts. But it's a bit pressing, because once those weeds take over, right, and we have a lot of bare ground down there right now, and if they take over, Weed Warriors will tell you, it's a tough battle to come back and win. And we have, like, there's a piece of property down in Original Town now that is just entirely overrun by business, because it was disturbed soil, and the weeds are going to take over. So there's a sense of urgency. Also, I want to remind you, and not all of you were even around for this, that the value of dead trees, they are great habitat for critters, they're roosting places for birds of prey, insects, all of these people love dead trees, and we understand, I mean, I do understand the pressure that you guys get around dead trees, reminders of fire, understand. From a habitat perspective, dead trees are very valuable. We presented you guys a, sort of a little statement on the value of dead trees, and if you haven't seen that or are interested, I can certainly forward you a copy of that, because it spelled out why dead trees are so valuable. Then, let's see, although, you know, I obviously showed you the Raptor Monitoring and Wildlife Monitoring Programs, would love to be able to share that data proactively, right? I mean, if you guys are considering doing something, I think the big step that I think would be useful for us is a little bit more proactive involvement of some of these resources that we have, as we plan these kinds of things. So, and in general, just planning ahead for restoration, if we're going to do these kinds of things in the future, because, like I said, disturbed soil, habitat destruction, we'd like to see just some planning for restoration in advance for those things. So anyway, we do know that there's communication that happens, thank you very much, you know, like, for example, there's not going to be some of the cleanup from the flood district down by Rock Creek, where there's a current active great horned owl net at nest, so, you know, appreciate that, and don't mean to imply that it just never happens, it does, but, you know, there's always room for improvement, so. Another thing to keep in mind, cottonwood trees, I know that people talk about them being junk trees, they are very important, in a riparian habitat, they're vital, and raptors rely on them a lot, so I think we need to consider replanting cottonwood trees, they're actually pretty cheap and easy to buy, so we should think about including cottonwoods in our restoration plans. We talked about the future, you know, the planning for restoration, and, oh, so this is a good one, if you guys are interested in walking down there, I'm happy to set up a walk down there, you can pull in Peter Ruffack, right, he's very knowledgeable, I don't even know him, but he's great, so happy to set up a walk down there, if anybody wants to walk down and sort of look at what happened along Coal Creek in particular, from a habitat perspective. So, I guess, like I said, our closing ask is that you support restoration efforts down there, and, you know, to Leslie's credit, she has already reached out to Malhead Flood District with some, we've sent her some plant recommendations, she's already reached out, started the process, talked to friends of Coal Creek, nothing's happened yet, but there's some discussion underway, which is wonderful, so we know it will be a multi-pronged effort, but anyway, we would love to get your support behind restoration efforts.
Okay.
Do you all have any thoughts on that? Because we really would love to have you come on a walk sometime, guaranteed you'll see our wildlife corridors differently, but does that leave you with any thoughts that you'd like to share with us?
I mean, I'm all for restoration, I mean, if there's a vegetarian ask, you know, let us know what it is, so long as it's something that we can make work, I think it makes sense. You know, I know that when the Rubicon team came in, I believe that Allison said that they worked with the ecologists to look at nests, and they were, they were pretty methodical in terms of what they were selecting, at least that's what was represented to us, so I don't think that they just went in there and just cut down everything that they could see, they, you know, they looked for nests, they looked, and I recognize that there's still going to be disturbance notwithstanding that.
I saw this event as actually a big lesson learned for our committee, too, because I think it truly is that balance of trying to mitigate the visual from the fire while maintaining the electric, but what we didn't necessarily do is really pronounce that need for habitat restoration at the same time. So I take that as a lesson learned from our committee, that anytime the town is talking about restoration, it should be coupled with, and what's our follow-on plan? So that didn't happen, we certainly did have ecological interest, and I do think that was screened. and I do think that was screened. But it was the after part that didn't have a plan. So we see that as a lesson learned, something that we can grow from.
And I think that's true for both Coal Creek and Rock Creek. And I know that there's been pressure to have a park-like setting down along Rock Creek. But it is wildlife habitat as well. And there was a lot of cleaning out. I mean, Christie lives along there. I live there. I live in that area as well. And just, I mean, they've been at it for months, right? They literally have been cleaning out underbrush. And it looks like a park. It really does. So anyway, that I think, like I said, our biggest lesson learned is we have to think about what comes after.
I have a question. So listening to you, I'm recalling recently we went on a trip to the sandings and my daughter became a junior ranger. So how involved are you with the schools as far as the kids being involved in the monitoring? And whether there's anything incentivized for them to go out and look for these things? But also not wanting to bring, you know, tons of people to where the habitat is. But if there's any way to work with our town communication in terms of getting this more advertised? Or if there's any collaborations with Aces like Arbor Day? Or just any place where people are going to be out with more awareness? And apologize if you're already doing all this stuff, but this is the things that came to mind.
Sure. Those are fair questions. And we do, I will be at Arbor Day. You know, we have big signage and things about the monitoring programs. So we do promote them. And Kevin has worked with us to promote these things. That doesn't mean that everybody's gotten the message or anything else. So I think there's always more that could be done on that front. And we'd love to see that. So Leslie and I can work with Kevin. We've been working with him on the rodenticide program. So happy to keep that going. And we do, we also have a booth at the World Nature Day and the National Trust. So anyway, we'll do that. And we've not done outreach to the schools. And that is actually an interesting, you know, especially I think for the wildlife program. I don't see any problems with having kids involved. I think, like I said, it's less sensitive data a little bit than where's the nest? Are you going to go sit and watch the nest for a couple of hours on a given Saturday or whatever? With this, it's just, hey, do you see critters? You know, let us know.
As a parent, anything that would get my kid to leave the house. And so if there's an incentive for like, if we go out to this trail that's, we don't have to drive very far or we ride our bikes and we're looking for something, that's a way better way to get her out of the house than just like go outside.
I said.
So I'm happy to help or engage with the school, like whatever that looks like. Because I think I can see how it could work. So if people.
I'd love to have a discussion with you sometime about what your original would be. Because I think that'd be really cool. Yeah. I think so.
So just circling back on the restoration. So I guess what would be helpful for me would be, you know, as much specificity about like what exactly you're looking at for restoration. We need X number of trees that were removed by Rubicon. And this type of shrub, this type of tree and estimated budgetary asks.
Absolutely.
And then depending on what the budget looks like and what staff's availability and abilities are, I don't think that there's any problem with moving forward with that.
No, that was like a perfect segue. The staff's availability. Because we are going to be asking again like we did last year, unsuccessful last year, that Pari gets a, I don't know, Pari junior.
Yeah, and that kind of does go into the budget. I mean, it teams up with your, your comment about outreach. I'll tell you, it was fantastic years ago when we thought that the budget requirements would be to have an incline somewhere. Or, you know, we thought about these amenities. And really that has, it shifted before Marshall Fire too with the acquisition of Coyote Ridge. And we realized we have amazing open space capacity now without an ability to manage it. And so that became our budget asks of how can we do this? And, and we were so fortunate that the town made sure that we got a park ranger.
And thank you for that. That's when I, they were, we had it when I came on. You were on two years before.
Right, right. So, so with that, that will always be a budget. We're kind of going into our number three, but that's fine. That will always be a standard request that we'll have is budget that would support additional staff. Another park ranger, someone who can have emphasis on our open space management. To your point about outreach with schools, we don't necessarily have the capacity for that. Not right now. But with another person working with the town, we, we could do a lot more. Before we even had the park ranger, we used to get emails from the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, volunteers who wanted to help out. And, and it was just OSAC members just trying to respond, but without the authority to. Because really, it all had to go through town. So, so that also gives it more of that, that expert town authority perspective that as volunteers, you know, we couldn't do that. So yes, that will always be a budget request, but you'll see.
Okay.
And there has been more of an emphasis, and I guess Todd and I didn't speak to it when we were doing the prep. But we're, you know, Mike and Todd are focusing on Coyote Ridge. And we've done that master plan first on the trail connections there and what should and shouldn't be done. But we also want to do that with the rest of the town based on the management plan that Leslie spearheaded. Todd and I have been trying to make sure that the trails document that we have that has like all the history, that Ryan Welch put together, all of this wonderful information, we're trying to update that and make sure that it's current and see what the recommendations should be. That'll be a budget ask. And Jeff is trying to get in and say, why don't we name these trails? And then put signage out there that tells people, hey, this is Trail So-and-So. Which Mike brought up an interesting point. Now, that was our last meeting where you said, what Boulder County has been doing? And you want to explain it to the group here? Of older naming conventions?
Boulder County is moving away from more traditional white settler name and moving more towards theme, thematics, whether it's a geographic or geological feature or biological feature. So maybe around birds or the fauna that are living in that area. So rather than, you know, the Foster Trail. It's the Boulder Trail, something along those lines. So suggest some, some kind of theme for OSAC to consider looking at trail names.
We had some discussion, Joanne and I, about the, Karen, that a step further. We didn't talk about this in the OSAC on Thursday and stuff. Name the ponds. It's been something that Joanne has wanted to do for a while. And she's like, well, what pond is this? I don't know.
Park to park, the ponds, I think, are one, two, three, or four, or something like that. I mean, we could be more creative than that. That would be something we could involve school kids in, is naming the ponds and maybe make it a school competition and have them look at the ponds and then come up with names.
There are so many, but it, it always comes down to personnel. And Pari, our park ranger, are you online right now? Pari?
Or can she be here?
I may be answering.
Yeah, I don't know. But when we discuss things with our park ranger, routinely we're being told there are opportunities that she's having to turn down because she doesn't have the capacity. And so whether or not it's working with Friends of Coal Creek to establish pollinator gardens throughout our town, unfortunately, she, she doesn't have the means to dub us experts and let us, you know, if Rita wants to lead a team, you know, go off and do that. Because you don't work for the town. And so we could do so much more if we just had at least one more person. And it could be a park ranger. It could be maybe an Americor, something, but someone with that official capacity. It's unfortunate, but. Pari, are you not there?
Because we, Karen and I had quite a discussion with her. And there are times when she's, she gets so frustrated because she's like, this is such a wonderful thing that I'd love to have the town doing. But I just can't, I just can't manage it. And I'm sure you're hearing that. But we're not the only group coming to with an ask. And we do understand that. But, you know, this is our passion. So we're going to push for our passion.
You know, the Historical Commission might be a helpful resource for naming conventions for trails or ponds. Because they have, you know, native or indigenous. And that, they have that. So that would eliminate at least like the research and sourcing of stuff like that.
And that's a good thing you mentioned. Because we did that with Vista Corridor when we were in the process of naming that. And yeah, I think that was the one that we worked with them.
So I'll give my, my perspective on just staff. I'm not, I'm not opposed to bringing on additional staff. But you know, anytime that we consider staff, like we just had a budgetary meeting like last week. And what was it, like $9.6 million we spend on, on personnel every year? So every person that we add, that's not just an annual expense. It's an every year expense, right? So plus benefits and everything. So it's, it's, you know, it would be one of those things where I would, with any of the hires, understand what is the ongoing work that this person's going to be doing. You know, there's always going to be like the one-off projects that we want to get through. But then you need to kind of justify what that person's.
That's why I was talking about the trails. Because you know better because you've been on a lot more years than this one I have. But they might acreage that we have in open space in the last 10 years. We went no open space rangers. Now we have one. The only one we do, it's the land management of the open space that we already have that we're most concerned about.
Yeah, so the point, the point is, is really to kind of like make the case for the, the, justifying the expense. And, you know, why this is something that is, something that the council should consider when we go through our budget process. And anytime we go through our budget process, we're considering a multi-year plan for, you know, okay, we're going to be bringing on an additional sheriff's deputy next year. And then a year from that, we've got more people coming into Public Works. And then after that, we've got another person coming into this department. So we're constantly doubling. But before you know it, all of a sudden, our staff goes from, you know, X number of personnel to a much more substantial number. And then that just substantially affects the budget. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it just, it is a reality, right? And you got to pay for those people.
In the open space arena, there's the potential for middle ground of seasonal rangers. Because summertime is a very busy time in all the parks and open spaces. And it, yeah, it doesn't require full-time commitment.
Another thing to consider would be term positions. So you have your full-time staff for a fixed term, like three years. And they're not permanent staff, but it's an opportunity to sort of see, test drive the capacity. Is there a real demand? And if, and if part of the challenge is we've got a mountain of work we need to overcome in the next couple of years, maybe the term position can help us get past some of that, like trail naming, signage, things like that. And after that three years, maybe we don't need that position anymore because we got the heavy lift done. Or if there's enough justification to the mayor's point that, yeah, there's actually enough work to, you know, justify this position full-time, that could be something we could consider down the road. So I think there's a few different approaches we could explore.
And I think that's a great idea. And one of the benefits that you get with that is that you're going to get good quality people still interested in it because there's such demand for that skill set and that experience level. They'd love to get their experience and have the town superior on it as part of their resume.
Matt, can you remind me? We can't pay salaries under the open space tax. Or can we? We can?
We do.
We do and we can? All right, good.
We do.
No, because I mean, that's, that's, that's something to consider, right? Because one of the things that we've talked about, necessarily on this council, but we've talked about it on previous boards, is like at some point when we get to the point where there are no additional parcels to acquire, right? Everything is built on or whatever, spoken for. And there's no additional open space to acquire. Does the 0.3% sales tax need to sunset, right? Like if it's not being used. But if it can be used to be paying staff salaries or if it can be used to be paid for maintenance and education.
I guarantee you we can find these.
Yeah. And we've obviously got a lot of debt associated with the Coyote Ridge purchase. So it's spoken for for years. But this is really a question for 20, 30 years down the road.
Well, in 2026 or 2027, part of that debt sunsets and we free up around, I think it's 50 grand. So, you know, baby steps. But there is some in there.
It's a term position.
Right.
What about interns? Would that help? With interns?
Yeah. Like they can get a program at a college.
Yeah, because then you get the labor, but they get the experience and.
I would defer to Leslie on that. That's.
I mean, we can get interns. There's some rules around not using interns for, to take the place of staff. But they can definitely contribute to the overall kind of workforce.
Are there any other criteria we need to consider as we make a proposal on specific, like specific staff? Just any other things that you, because obviously you get a lot of proposals around different kinds of staff. Are there, is there any other criteria, I guess, we need to consider as we compete against other areas?
I don't think there's necessarily like an exact science to it. But I think when, when I look at a budget ask, I'd be interested in knowing what are we currently doing? What is beyond the capacity of current staff? What are the unmet needs?
And if there are alternative funding sources other than the general fund. So whether that's the Parks and Open Space Fund or you're able to get a grant or something from an outside funding agency for, you know, a couple of years, that all gets factored in as well.
Thank you for that.
I'd be interested to understand how much personnel, what the ratio is for land management in Boulder County versus what we have. You know, I don't know if you.
Can we look at Mike?
I don't know that I know that off the top of my head.
No, no.
Question numbers.
Just as like a percent.
No, how many acres does each land manager manage? I don't know what the exact criteria would be.
And then give us a ground, some grounding for what we might be asking for.
And remember how Pari had said when she was with the open space group? It's the ranger.
For park ranger association.
When she was talking with them and she was explaining, you know, the things, the scope of the program and what happened. She's like, so where's the rest of your team? And she goes, this is it. So what we are accomplishing is remarkable. But I think that Mike would come up with this stuff from Boulder County, which is maybe right. I think we'd look pretty understaffed. And open space is what made my husband and I move here because we love it.
Well, thank, thank you for that. And we'll, we'll take that for consideration as we're moving forward with our budget requests for you. Because we want to be armed for success so that we can do, because you're right, Rita. I mean, this is profoundly, what makes our town so unique is our, our open spaces. And so with that, I'd like to segue into, our main mission is to, to acquire and conserve. And you know, with that, it's, it's always a little bit sensitive, right? Because we're, we're mostly looking at parcels that don't belong to us. They're private property, but we're looking at it. And you know, this, this began years ago when, when we started really developing a summary report. And we have a lot of great reports on our website, but I do encourage you to read the 2024 summary report and recommendations update. It's robust, it's 20 something pages long, but it goes through details of these properties that we're looking at. And I would say though, our town has been incredibly successful. It's been delicate because a lot of the success has actually come post Marshall Fire. And we recognize that with the, the original town area along Coal Creek. But that being said, even before Marshall Fire, there were three top areas that this committee has been looking at as, you know, for the last 10 years as our top three. Town 15, which is town-owned, Coal Creek Properties, which again, we had tremendous success along this corridor. And then the Saharius, home of the Hodgson's reservoir. So those have been consistently the top three. And I would say, so the 2024 recommendation put Coal Creek Properties as number three. But that was primarily because there was really only one parcel left that we're looking at there.
And the numbers are really close.
Right.
Like we say, the top three, they were within a half.
And, and I will say, so when we, when we're, when we're doing, the methodology is, it's, it's very subjective. We realize that. We all have our own set of opinions of what we think is important. But we're looking at compatibility with adjacent land uses, land size, proximity and access to other open spaces, surface water on property, migration corridors, attainability, which is always hard to go round and round whether or not, because we don't know. We're not real estate agents, nor do we work for the town. And then the level of threats to existing resources. So the, every year we look and say, is this what we want to consider in our rack and stack? And we haven't changed it in, in many years. I'd like to start with Town 15 and then we can go into Saharius.
Is that Saharius number one?
Well, we could do Saharius first.
I feel like we should cover number one and go. Um, just to give you quick historical, I know a lot of you, you're very familiar with Saharius. But just quickly to go through the history of it, it's a 24-acre parcel. And the biggest feature of it is its significance and adjacency to the Hodgson-Harris reservoir. As well as its identification as a unique and very important wildlife resource. So this has consistently risen to the top of the list for OSAC, I think even before I was on it. It, it is privately held, obviously right now has a mix of native and non-native vegetation as well as cattail marsh, some stream that weaves through it. And what I wanted to highlight is that Boulder County has designated this as critical wildlife habitat. In 2014, that reservoir went through a dam, there was a dam reconstruction to get, to get everything flowing again and so that could be utilized. It was a $1.2 million investment between Boulder County and the town of Superior. So the town's investment was $600,000, which, which we maintain is important to keep reminding ourselves of because that was a significant investment on the part of the town. There is a high diversity of species on that property, specifically waterfowl. There's a lot of migratory pattern through there as well as overwintering by waterfowl. I think over, over probably 85, that was 2023, but over 85 at this point species just of, just of waterfowl and nesting species were confirmed. So that's huge. So we, on open space, there's a whole Hodgson-Harris preservation position paper that we put together. And that's periodically updated. And in that, and in that position paper, OSAC highlights some important considerations. Should development come to the council, which it has before, and obviously hasn't been successful passing. But in the, in the event of development, I just wanted to highlight two main things. One is an open space buffer around the reservoir. That would be definitely, hopefully, no less than 100 feet from that reservoir and preferably up to 300. And there are a lot of reasons for that. And there shouldn't be any human or pet interaction in that buffer. But for many of the wildlife habitat reasons that I, that I've already mentioned. So that, I think if a, if a development proposal were to come to you, you would see a lot of involvement from us. And we would be referring a lot to that position paper that has been written and maintained through the years. There's also pretty critical prairie dog habitat on the site. Tracy talked a lot about wildlife. I'm not going to get too much into the benefits of prairie dogs and their importance to our ecosystem. But I am going to pass around brochures that some of you probably already have gotten from me. But I'd love it if council members could just take one and learn a little bit more about prairie dogs. But that is one of the last colonies in the town of Superior on private property. And so we have put together a whole plan, a whole playbook specifically designed around if a development proposal were to come and you were entertaining approval of that, that there is a whole plan put together for those prairie dogs. We've, we've found the sites, we've even secured a local site that's so important. And we have a whole playbook for that. So we've done all of that legwork for you and would really hope that you would compel a developer to follow that and to translocate those prairie dogs.
And there's a timeline associated with it, right?
There is a whole timeline and we, you know, if needed, we can get more into that. But just know that we've done all of that legwork and put together a whole plan. And you know, just also want to highlight how important prairie dogs are for this ecosystem. They've lost about 98% of their habitat throughout North America. We can be on the forefront and leaders as a town where we don't just talk about wildlife and say we're doing conservation efforts. We actually do it and not make sure a colony gets annihilated. Because that's what happens in a lot of other jurisdictions. There's a lot of lip service and then they're gone. And that's how they lose their habitat. And believe it or not, they are a huge part of wildfire mitigation. They provide fire breaks around town and they're a native species that can do that. And they don't cost contract money upfront. So we do have a whole plan for that. One thing that we did want to come to you all with tonight, as we talk about land acquisition priorities, and this will come into play, I don't know if specifically with Town 15, but relative to the Saharius property, it's for sale right now. As we have, you know, moved away, pivoted a little bit from the Coal Creek properties, this, this would be at the top of our list to look at for acquisition. We have started, you know, conversations with the town grants coordinator, I think I have that title right. But over the years, you know, there have been those of us who have had conversations with outside entities about grants for land acquisition. So we wanted to just touch base with you all tonight and see, you know, do we, do we have your blessing for continuing to look in that? Because this one's been a little bit on the back burner the last few years. Just to touch base with you on that, you know, we need to also talk about Town 15. But that was a specific ask we wanted to talk to you about tonight. Are you okay if we go ahead and have those conversations to look at pursuing potential acquisition of that site specifically for open space? I know there's a lot of other interests, but we'd like to know, you know, that we'd be spending our time wisely looking into that. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Well, and to recall, I mean, the, the acquisition of Coyote Ridge, I don't think that would have been possible without some of these agencies, Conservation Fund specifically, to be that, that coordinator between our town and adjacent towns.
Boulder County kicked in a bunch of money.
Of course.
Into Jeffco.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm, I am open to, you know, seeing what we can do. I think that the impediment really in, in the past has been just what Mr. Saharius wanted for the property.
Yeah.
And I think it was something like seven, eight million dollars for that, that property. And that was five years ago, something like that. So, you know, who knows what he wants now? And kind of given where the, the, the open space fund is right now, like we just wouldn't have the wherewithal to put together an acquisition of that size like anytime soon. So I, I guess like, that, that's kind of like the, I don't want people wasting time on something that's just like not feasible from just a financial perspective. I'm all for trying to think creatively, but you know, I don't want to have you just spend a bunch of time and get your hopes up and then all of a sudden find out that like, well, it's really, this is something that's maybe possible in 2035, 2030, something, 10 years. Once the Coyote Ridge debt is retired and then we can build up the balance a little to do something substantial.
Sure. And we can continue to think creatively.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, and that's good information for us to have. Because if you were to say, no, you know, there's other things in mind for that property, that's, you know, that kind of debt and things a little bit more for us than, you know.
We don't have any, any plans for that property. And we're, you know, we're going through a comp plan update right now. And so we haven't seen what the draft's going to look like. And we don't know necessarily what the recommendation is going to be for that property. It's zoned for RAC, right? So it's zoned for commercial use.
Right.
And I think that that was the, the, the problem. There's supposed to be an interchange off of, on EDF, right? And so there was going to be like a gas station or a hotel or something like that. And then they never developed that interchange. So we've got this legacy zoning from when Rock Creek was originally planned. And Mr. Saharius doesn't want to do something necessarily all commercial there. So you know, anything that he would be bringing to us would involve some sort of rezoning ask. And you know, when, when we had a previous concept, there was some commercial, but it was mainly residential. But you know, obviously the, the board at that time didn't move forward with it and so it never happened. But I, I kind of feel like the zoning on the land right now is probably the, the best thing for maintaining the status quo. There's no application to some commercial right now. So it's not like, it's like imminently going to be developed for residential, you know, this year. But of course, all that can change. We can get an application tomorrow and.
And that's where it comes into play, that we, we really want to emphasize the fact that there are key considerations our town needs to, to think about in terms of the prairie dogs, the, the 300-foot easement from, from the water, the protections. That, that needs to be the conversation with any potential developer before it's too late.
And we had that conversation with Mr. Saharius originally, like in the original concept that we had, there were buffers for the, the reservoir. There was discussions about, you know, not gassing all the prairie dogs and then just developing it, like doing something. So he was at least aware of it at that time. Now, he could sell the, the sites for sale, he could sell it to somebody else and then.
Sure.
You know, we'd have to have those conversations again.
Right.
But it's.
Have there been any, sorry?
Go ahead.
Have there been any conversations with him regarding carving out the reservoir specifically? Because it doesn't seem like you can really develop that anywhere.
Well, he doesn't own that. So that's owned by.
That's Boulder County?
Boulder County, yeah. Yeah, he, he owns up to the shoreline basically, so.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we have that communication.
So we will consider, continue to consider options for a funding stream. But we will routinely bring this back up to, because the, the town council membership changes. So we, we always want to make sure that you're aware of the, the considerations that we're applying to this property. And then, then the other property would be, I'm sorry? Town 15. We implore you to consider making Town 15 open space, natural. And then, so it's, it's town-owned. And I know that when, when many people look at that parcel, there's this thought of, it was supposed to be something else, but it hasn't. So, so I understand that side of it. But the reality is, in its undevelopment, it has become a critical corridor that stretches along the entire Coal Creek to Boulder County. And so that, the, well, the Boulder County open space, I should say, it's Boulder County. So with the habitat, it, it's just incredible. And I know you're moving the cameras soon to capture even more of what we're seeing there. So we implore you to do that. In the 2021 Park and Rec Master Plan, over 450 Superior residents said, leave it alone. And if anything, you know, make it park-like, I guess, you know? But, but that was a resounding number of people in our town who responded. And I would just say, you know, it only took 60 for, for our town to say that we needed to put a roundabout on Rock Creek. So I, I just ask for, for that consideration for, for the importance that Town 15 has become in its undevelopment.
Okay. We tried to have a discussion about Town 15 about a year ago and maybe six months ago. And then, you know, it was one of the, those things that I thought it would be good for us to have some discussion about like the direction we wanted to head, regardless of what it was going to be, right? Like whether people wanted to make it open space, whether some people wanted to build a rec center on it, some people wanted to do parkland, some people wanted to do housing. Versus just the status quo, which is just done by the town, subject to the decisions of, of future council.
But I think that's what was so great about the 21 Master Plan is it gave everyone a, a chance to say what, what the town wants. And there were lots of ideas ranging from rec center, aquatic center, to garden plots, a little bit of everything. But there again, people want to leave it as it is. And as a committee, we certainly do for the wildlife corridor aspect of it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, this is just my personal opinion. If, if the people of the town of Superior really want the Town 15 to be open space, they need to marshal their resources, their efforts, their voice, and make us make it so. Like this meeting is a good starting point for that. But we need to hear from people like all the time, showing up at meetings, speaking during public comment, filling our inbox with something that we can't ignore.
Well, I, I think you've had some of that with all due respect.
We've had some of it, but it hasn't been, hasn't been sufficient.
Especially from the Marshall Fire community who are rebuilding adjacency to the property.
And I'm not saying it's, it's, it's a guarantee that it would happen. But I think that like if you actually wanted to, to make it happen, you need to, to work at it, to get our attention, to, to get us to actually focus on it. Because I mean, there may be, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for anybody here. Like some people may have differences of opinions to what that property should be used for. And you know, they're not necessarily, I don't think anybody's necessarily like right with, with the, the best use. Like it could be different, different things. And the comp plan is definitely taking a look at it. And we're going to get recommendations from the planning commission and from, from staff as to what the, you know, best uses would be. But I think that just as a practical matter, to get, knowing this council.
I didn't realize we hadn't been loud enough so we could, we could simply. We'll harness that.
We tend to respond to public outcry.
If I could expand on that, like we are, as a council, looking at competing interests about that property.
Of course.
Right? And so whereas the people think they're being loud about it staying open space, equally people are being loud about wanting housing and equally loud about wanting more revenue sources and equally loud. And so that's, I think that's the point he's making is not that we're like, you have to come tell us that you want it. Like that's not it. It, it just, no one entity has pushed stronger in any direction. And so those competing uses are just all out there. And, and so for us, it's helpful for us to make decisions when there is a lot of noise.
Yes. Yeah, my, my advice wasn't necessarily tailored just to Town 15. Because if you want us to do anything, let's like annoy us enough that we're like, fine, we'll do it and then we can move on.
Well, and it is about harnessing everything within all of the people in, in Superior to, to ask that question, what, what the intent is. I just hope that the Superior comp plan will indeed include the survey from 2021. Because it wasn't that long ago that our town answered just that question. All right, we'll keep on it.
And I'll just say that, you know, with the comp plan, and I know I shared this with OSAC before, as a town, we have, I think, four pieces of property that could be developed for, that could generate sales tax revenue. And that is precious, a precious commodity, not only to the town today, but the town in 50 years. And so we need to be mindful of that, that we are not setting up future town, town councils for massive revenue shortfalls because we designated all of our space that could be developed as commercial space as open space or parkland. So these are the balances that were, that at least I'm trying to make as, as I think about these decisions. And maybe we can't do all four properties as those open space, but maybe there's one that's like, yeah, there's community consensus, this one piece of land, we need to make this designated open space in perpetuity and as the top priority. And these other three, we're willing to, you know, consider other options, so.
And that's absolutely fair. And that's where that document that we update every year would certainly come into play.
Yeah.
Because you could be potentially looking at a parcel to become open space, which is on our list, but maybe is down at the bottom of our list.
Yeah.
And so maybe that could be a viable place for retail.
So we are at 6:59. We've got a meeting that starts at 7, so.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time. We really appreciate it. All your volunteer hours, all the service that you've given to the, the town. We're, we're so much better off because you're willing to do this work. So thank you for that. We really appreciate it. And you know, we. And, you know, please don't hesitate to major us with budgetary asks and land acquisition requests, you know, this week we all.
Thank you for everybody, everybody else on the council, but I do read every single email that comes in.
It's just Mike.